...with Glenn and a few other guys on all the hard work that's went into this over two years and throughout that time, I know the mayor was at eighty percent of the meetings, same with Gary Murray. Just to clarify a few things, if you want it slightly different than the mayor as far as where it started, it wasn't just for definitions of words, it was to, in my opinion, it was to get a control of what was happening with the ordinance. Used to, we had like three hundred and fifty square feet, we had hardly, it was wild, wild west. Signs anywhere, didn't matter if it was at the hospital or by an interstate where you need a larger sign. And over time, within the last approximately four, five years, amendments started happening into the city sign ordinance where they were striking out odd stuff and, in my opinion, whoever was behind this really didn't know what they were doing because it didn't make sense. Like right now, on Lincoln Street, the way the ordinance, and this was an amendment that was put in there, if you put a sign on your property line on Lincoln Street, you're allowed it, three square foot sign, three foot tall, which makes no sense. A realtor signs six square feet typically. And that's when I felt I could help out and give definitions or facts and studies. This is stuff I do for a living all over the US. It's nothing that has to do with my personal feelings of if I like a tall sign or not. The goal is, when I helped out with the committee, to come up with fact-based studies, and these, most of the studies are put together by highway departments, Pennsylvania State Roadway, and this is how they put signs up everywhere, you know? It's thirty mile an hour, you need this big sign because the sign has to be legible, has to be visible, and a car takes so long to stop. If a car's going forty-five mile an hour, it takes approximately a hundred and fifty foot to stop. Things like that that has nothing to do with personal feelings, and that's another thing that disappoints me about the mayor with being too tall. You know, maybe I think the big dirt pile that Whittaker has is too tall, but that doesn't matter. What matters here, in my opinion, is facts that go on eligibility, safety, and I'm also a big believer in small business, and Greensburg has to be different, and we can't rely on big box stores and put a disadvantage to the small business. There's a lot of businesses, small businesses, that we run into that their budget is so tight that they have a difficult time even afford to buy a sign, and it's a proven fact that the sign is their least expensive form of advertisement. They may get a little radio, a little newspaper out of it, too. A lot of their money goes to supporting the public, charities, events. You see these people daily, they're trying to survive, and that sign, for some of them, it's seventy-five percent of their walk-in business, new customers is from a sign. And again, these are facts. So it's really a large business, corporate identity, a lot of times can adapt a lot better because they have a broad range of advertising dollars and resources, they're hitting internet, they're hitting everything. And again, a small business can't, you know, afford that a lot of time. And to go back to the hospital, and you mentioned forty-five foot tall signs, the hospital's two-lane road right there, the way us in the committee came up with the facts, fifty square foot, max eighteen foot high. And next, with the residence, you mentioned earlier having a sign in the front yard, that's not allowed. Having a business next to a residence, there's limitations on that, too, the way this is rode up with electronic message.
Sean, the reference to the hospital was the height of the hospital, and the people living one-fifty would have the B3 area, the signs across the road from them.
Some of your past quotes, Mayor, mentioning didn't want to see circus signs or new roads with big signs. You also mentioned you agree with helping out business, you agree and you want interstate traffic to see signs and come to these businesses. I just think all this hard work, two years of public money, government money, people using their personal time and effort, you know, I just feel like it's almost, I'm wondering if it's worthless, but no matter, like Glenn said, whatever you want to do, you're the boss here, but I'm not giving up and I'm not going away, so you'll be seeing me more no matter what you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. I'm not the boss here, I'm the council advisor person.
Sir.
Approach.
Sure, absolutely.
Paul Montego, if you're in town, I first of all want to apologize for my appearance at some of these meetings I've been coming to, did a little workout before I got here. And I want to commend you folks, I know this is hard work and it's frustrating. Democracy was designed to work slowly, and so sometimes it's frustrating, and I appreciate Sean's efforts as well, I know you guys put a lot of time into this. I really like this town we live in, and I have some concerns about the aesthetic value, so I appreciate what the mayor is raising concerns. We can differ about, perhaps some discussion could have happened earlier, and some did, and some perception more could have been, but I'd really like us to take a look at the aesthetic value of the town and think about how big and high do the signs need to be. That is, signs are by their very nature among the most prominent features of a landscape, and it's something that shouldn't be taken lightly as we're discussing the aesthetic value of a landscape in our town, and I'm glad that we're giving some more attention to that right now. I totally agree, however, that the folks who are saying we really needed some clarity in the ordinance, absolutely, and Sean had a couple of really good examples, and I want to encourage you to clarify some things and retain what you've done so far in the work on the ordinance to make some clarity. We've made some miscues in the town over the years, I think, with some of the aesthetic value of the town, as we grow and we want this to be a great place to live and work, the standard of living to be high, we need to give more attention to these aesthetics. And I'm a very pro-growth guy, I'm very pro-small business, if you want to bring jobs into a place, you've got to let business work, you've got to let it run, so I want you to understand it's my perspective as well. But it's unfortunate, I think, and I'm not sure who all, and I think the county has something to do with some of these miscues, but we have, in the gateway to our city from the west end coming into forty-six, we have, in the gateway to our city, which a lot of people come into town that way because of the use of the baseball fields and the park, we have a string of self-storage units with no tree. Oh, I take that back, there is a one tree that's hiding a little trailer that's sitting behind it. I'm not sure how that happened, but that was certainly a miscue, it's unfortunate. I mean no disrespect to whoever's business that is. On the other end of town, I know there was a permission given for a gentleman to put up a transmission business there, it's fallen through and it's never been dealt, but we've got some real opportunity. We've got Honda here now, what a gold mine that is, we've run that over some other worthy competitors, and I'd like to see us, and that's going to grow into some other things, we'll have other businesses come because of that. Let's not forget the aesthetic value of this. I'm not sure why we need bigger and taller signs. Understand there's speed limits and things like that. I think about, if you've ever been to Hilton Head Island, I'm not saying we're Hilton Head, but if you go around there, you can't see a sign for Diddley because their rules don't let them have anything over three feet off the ground, I think. And you would worry, well, that's a very touristy place, how are people who aren't around there going to get around it? They do. I'm not saying we go that extreme, certainly not saying that. I'm not saying we make the signs any shorter than the current ordinance allows, but I really would like us to give some focus and read the proposals and make sure that we're addressing the aesthetics of this town as a paramount concern as well as the clarity of the ordinance. Yes, that's what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, do what you please, you may have got right. My concern is if you do veto what my decision was, and there's a lag time in between if you decide to amend the ordinance that has been presented, there's that time period in there that's in the way to buy or sell a sign that's above, beyond what you may come up with, repercussions to that is, I mean, you can have probably, correct?
Well, conceivably, yes. I mean, there would be no basis to deny a sign permit requested if it meet, met the ordinance's requirements.
Like I said, my concern was if you heard it, because when the ordinance passed and signed, it's too late. Maybe you should bust it.
As much as I, making the adjustments in the way that you may, if you're going to parse it down, okay, try to make it on Friday night, I think it could be done, if we take time to it, I'm certainly supportive of that. If we need to take the time to do it right. I don't want to do it again. Me doing it right, whatever, we do.
Mike Wood, so if we take the time to do it, we just come back in July to make up to present the new ordinance?
Yeah, essentially, I mean, whenever you, if you want the ordinance changed, you'll have to raise it. And so July would be the first opportunity you would have. Now, if you had meetings before that, you could certainly put it on the agenda and raise it, and you could go that way.
Just, I mean, can we take these recommendations back to the planning commission and have them make the changes to the ordinance?
I think this is a decision of the council and not the planning commission at this point in time.
I'm just bringing that up, and I'm just.
Yeah, we could bring it back to the, back to the planning commission, but basically what you have before you is what the planning commission presented. So, and I don't mean to be disrespectful, Jamie, I'm just saying.
I don't think you're.
I just think that this is a, this right now is a council decision, and so taking it back to the planning commission is, we can do it, but really it comes down to this body making a decision about what it must do, and I think it's now in the hands of this council to determine what they want to do.
So do we let the veto stay as it is until next month? Presenting, we're going to go ahead and.
So your concerns were just dealing with the B3?
We have other areas as well. You have other areas, like the B2 is fifty feet, three hundred square feet. Is there anything that exceeds two hundred and twenty-five square feet? Two hundred and twenty-five square feet. Yes, where it's that higher, I think.
I mean, I guess I, maybe in my mind, I don't know that, and I don't know that it's a whole lot, Glenn, I think we could just state that, I mean, if we did decide to make the amendment, we would just change anywhere where the maximum square footage exceeds two hundred and twenty-five square feet, it would be reduced to two hundred and twenty-five square feet, and anywhere the max height exceeds forty feet, it would be reduced to forty feet. And I, I mean, if we're all in agreement with that, we can finish this up tonight and get this over. I don't know what everybody thinks.
I'm torn, that's why I haven't made motion yet, I'm not sure which way to go, I'll be honest.
On the Mid-North Michigan Avenue, two hundred and seventy-five square foot signs at forty-eight feet in the air, and obviously the same thing on Leonard's Way, what's beloved is adopted, built what the road's built for it, it's a B2.
Can we move the table list to the end of the meeting so we, you guys can have time to think about them and then we'll, please?
Would you be, you would be moving to amend the agenda and table just further discussion related to the sign ordinance until the end of the meeting? Is that a chance?
Second motion.
For discussion during now, all those, the fairies say aye. All aye. Both same time. That's the B2 president at the end of the meeting. Moving, not alone, tax payments, they are all renewed.
It's on the agenda, or amended, amended agenda that I sent there.
That's right, email.
The Mid-North Michigan Avenue.
I got it in email, it did come on email.
It did come in the email, I sent it the same day.
It did, it did. I got an email.
Because Mark forgot to tell me to put it on there. It is, it is, it amended what was sent to all the council members.
I didn't, I didn't look, what's the one that's outside? It doesn't have it. It doesn't have it. Wait.
It doesn't have it.
If the one outside does not have it on it, then it is not on the agenda. So that's, the statute is the one that is posted and noticed available on the day of the year, meeting outside.
So that's why a lot of people move agendas right.
Is it too late to amend the agenda? Can you amend the amend of the amend?
I think you can certainly still amend the agenda, I don't think you're so far down that you couldn't do it. I would point this out, though, that I think may have some impact on what you guys are talking about. The statutory scheme that, under which this ordinance is related, has been changed and takes effect July 1st of 2013. So after July 1st, 2013, a lot of what you have in your current ordinance is not going to jive and match with the state ordinance. So it may be worthwhile for you to table it long enough to allow that statute to take effect so that you can make your ordinance consistent with the state.
With regard to that, we're going to do it.
Yes?
Let's move on.
The tax payments, all renewed, as the tax payment committee and I have met and agreed upon renewing them another year. There was only one situation, one of the Hampton Inn was in the process, it had been sold, and it was sold to another company, and during the transferring and everything, the abatement was missed and was unplugged. And they are following what they have said they would do, so they're entitled to abatement each year if they file for it, but when someone's property is sold, the abatement is inherited by the purchaser, and no mistake made during the transition, they did not follow it. And they have asked for a recent abatement for that year.
Several of these CF forms, for the time remaining, there's a notation saying including 2013. So it's this year, one more year after that, or this first one on top, but there's a later one here for pre-city estates, and then the Hampton Inn, the notation's not there. Are we to presume that what's written here does include 2013?
Yeah, usually they leave the, up to us to write, a lot of times they fill it in, and we want to clarify it when they do it.
And the only other one that I, that looks to me like it's, I don't see a CF one for some overlooked, or for body code, thermal processing?
Okay, that was the purchaser, the company, was the electric replaced by green signs.
Used to be high temp.
Used to be high temp.
And how many years has it been? It doesn't have any.
It says for maybe three years.
I don't have that page, I guess, just got this.
So then you'd be good to go. Continue motion to approve the renewals in the correction on Hampton Inn, so one year, last year. I'll make one. Second. For discussion during now, all those, the fairies say aye. All aye. Both same time. The gentleman passes. Here's the item, this is orders 2013 dash two, discussion only, establishing the cumulative cap rate, are you going to do that?
If somebody had a chance to look over the proposed ordinance, I mean, I guess the first question before I introduce someone from REEDY would be, do we want to move forward with this? It was discussed last year during when we went to the IAC budget workshop, and I think Glenn and Darrell both had mentioned that they thought that we wanted to pursue that this year, so we kind of put that into some of our discussions with REEDY when we're talking about budgets, because that's going to tie into that if we raise this rate. We're going to have to have some extra meetings, we weren't able to get with Indiana Media Group on our advertisement, didn't quite get in the paper when it was supposed to be, there was a spam issue with wanting to have a public hearing tonight, so if we want to move forward with it, we'll have to be again on the 10th, you know, just to have a public hearing, and again on the 17th to have a, actually, we can have a public hearing and a first reading, and then on the 17th, we can have a second reading and adoption, if that's what the board wants to do. If we don't want to move forward with re-establishing the cumulative rate, then we're not supposed to. But if we do want to move forward with it, there'll be a couple extra meetings to get it in before the August 1st timeframe that we would have to adopt it, to get it to DLGF and remonstrance period and all the different things that tie into that August 1st date. We basically took August 1st back to timeline out of from there, so I figure at this point, and I tried to make sure everybody got the information, the timelines, any ordinance in D now, so I'm going to let you guys decide if you want to move forward with it, and if you do, and maybe Brandon might be able to shed a little light on that from the tax impact side, I know he brought some paperwork tonight to kind of show, you know, work, you know, just for discussion tonight, and it might lead into, you know, for the public hearing discussion, too, so, but whoever wants to move forward with it. I mean, I just kind of hit the highlights, I didn't discuss, you know, what, what things will, I mean, it's something that we would like to re-establish, and I think.
It's something that we've had in the past and through the years, has been increased, and the residents bring it back up to where it was, and we would like to share how much it affected to have on residents.
This is Brandon from REEDY.
Hi, Brandon, I was with REEDY group, I did just a little brief detail on the actual revenue that re-establishing created the full rate would produce, and I also showed the impact on the circuit breaker for all different types of circuit. I do. I've actually just said it just the right amount. So I'll just go through this real quick, and then if you guys have any questions or want to discuss any of it. Like the mayor said, basically, when the assessed value of any city, town, county, whatever it is grows, the DLGF has this calculation that you have in 1782 notice every year, and if your AP growth is substantially more, or for that matter, not so substantially more, they cut back that cumulative cap development rate. So with that said, this is the process that we have to do to get it re-established. And for a city, it is a max of five cents, which is the point oh five, that's the max rate that you possibly have. The current rate of the city is point oh two six four, so two point six percent, or cents, and the increase would be two point three cents. Your current assessed value is four hundred and thirty-six million, and what I'm giving you right now is kind of the breakdown of the numbers that go into the impacts, so that way it'll make sense when we get to page two. But the increase in annual revenues, the way that this works is your property tax bill would grow based on the assessed value and view rate, and it would be right around a hundred thousand dollars, and that's net of the circuit breaker coming out of it. And then there's other taxes that would go into CCD fund as well, such as excise tax, EVAD, stuff like that, roughly seventy-nine hundred bucks is a good projection. Then the general fund would receive like income tax, such as through Cajun Co. County, ceded, any type of income tax that's out there that the county has in place for your unit, and that would be about forty thousand dollars. Total increase in revenue of a hundred and forty-six thousand four sixteen, based on the new rate and the current assessed value of 2013. The next bracket down basically shows you the total taxing district rate, which is for the entire city of Greensburg, two point three six. Okay, so it's two dollars and thirty-six cents for the entire taxing district rate. You have a ceded inventory reduction credit, that's just a credit that decreases the actual homeowner's property tax bill. Oftentimes, counties will have that in place, and each district will have a different amount. Underneath that, there is the. Underneath that, there is the circuit breaker by basically what we call the buckets, which is one percent, two percent, three percent. And then there's a sixty five and over circuit breaker. This is straight off of the county's abstract, Decatur County abstract. So that's the total amount, four hundred and thirty five thousand dollars of circuit breaker impact that the city has. So that circuit breaker, for anyone who's not familiar with it, is the loss of property tax revenue on all your funds. So once you hit that circuit breaker, you basically start having to basically pad, pad in where a loss of revenue would be or absorb throughout the funds in your budget. And sometimes people have severe, severe circuit breakers and you guys are really just about four percent, which is not bad at all. Next down is the tax cap calculations. And what we did was just a hypothetical value. So the homestead is a hundred thousand dollars. We just try to use a generic value for, for any unit we run this on. And at one percent is what they're capped at. So their max tax bill would be a thousand dollars. Multifamily, which is your rentals, two percent, we put about seventy five thousand dollars, and that's fifteen hundred max tax cap. Commercial, two hundred and fifty thousand, three percent, seventy five hundred is your tax gap. And with that information, we kind of compile it on the next page because your current tax bill is, is at the top. And it's the same brackets, the homestead, the multifamily, and the commercial, which is your one percent, two percent, three percent. And you'll see that using that hundred thousand dollar homestead, taking out the deductions, which is your homestead deductions, your mortgage deduction, your supplemental deduction, sixty seven thousand dollar deductions. So your net AV is thirty two thousand seven fifty. That's what you're taxed on. Your tax bill for the entire taxing district is two point three six. Gross taxes, seven hundred and seventy three dollars for a homestead that has a hundred thousand dollar gross AV after deductions. And then you take out the ceded homestead credit, which was on that first page, and your total tax bill for the year is seven nineteen. So your circuit breaker is a thousand, your total tax bill is seven nineteen, so you're under the circuit breaker at the one percent. And what we're showing here is obviously your current tax bill below that, we're going to show the tax bill after your new CCD fund will be reestablished. But ultimately, what this is showing is that you're not at the circuit breaker and you don't have a big issue with the circuit breaker, so there really wouldn't be a big impact. The only impact that you do have in circuit breaker is the two percent. You see in the middle column, the seventy five thousand dollar, it is currently seventeen hundred and seven, excuse me, seventy dollar annual tax bill, but your circuit breaker caps fifteen hundred. So there's a circuit breaker credit to the, to the taxpayer of two hundred and seventy dollars. Same deal for the three percent, commercial industrial, there's no circuit breaker there, fifty nine hundred for any annual tax bill. Now, right below that, with the new amount increased, I think it was two point three doll, or two point three cents, you still are under the circuit breaker for the one percent and the three percent. And you've just increased the circuit breaker very minimally, seventeen dollars and seventy cents. So the overall increase towards the very, very bottom there where it's in bold, the homestead, the overall increase for a hundred thousand dollar gross AV, sixty cents per month to implement this. You actually, just for multifamily, two percent, have a circuit breaker cap, don't have an increase because it's already at the circuit breaker. And then for commercial industrial, it's four dollars and ninety two cents. That's what the new increase in that rate would, would cause to a taxpayer, to the city's circuit breaker. And basically, right below that, what we show is a total circuit breaker credit increase, seventeen hundred dollars. And what that is, is everything combined for the entire tax industry. It's not just one homeowner, but seventeen hundred dollars is what would increase your circuit breaker. And that's the loss of revenue because you're already added at the two percent level. That is very minimal when your total circuit breaker on the front page is already four thirty five. So it really wouldn't be something that would be recognized. With that said, your total net benefit of increasing this rate to five cents would be a hundred and forty four thousand seven thirty. And that's after the circuit breaker increase. So really pretty beneficial to do that. Not really a big waltz in it. Obviously, you guys would have to still go through the public hearing process, the first publication process, the adoption process. Depending on how many meetings you guys do, to adopt something, you would have to do one or two there, depending on if you vote to suspend the rules. After that, you would basically publish an adoption notice, and at that point, it would do a thirty day remonstrance period. After the end of that thirty day remonstrance period, you get an auditor's certificate of no remonstrance, like basically just saying nobody went to the auditor's office and had an issue with it. If that's done and that's, you know, no problems there, then you send it to the state and the new rate is issued on your next ensuing budget year. So that's basically the process that would have to be followed once this was decided to move forward. But overall, this is, this is a fund that is used for basically any kind of capital purchasing, which is going to be directly incorporated in any type of capital planning or future planning for the city itself. So a hundred and forty four thousand will go along.
So someone with a hundred thousand dollar assessment on their home, paid by seven dollars twenty cents per year?
Um, yeah. Be right there. Six, yeah, just over seven dollars. And that's annual?
Clarification, they, in the front page there, we're talking about the increase in the revenue. So we would have roughly in the CCF on the official hundred and five, six thousand dollars or so.
That's correct.
Per year, that the general income taxes increase could be for general fund.
Correct. That would be a toward offer.
So, but to a hundred and forty four, including both the general as well as.
That is correct.
That is correct. Okay. Would I, would I indicate earlier, I think, we need to do this without some expense, but the payback is going to be paid for the future because of government programs. So that, that was disclosed because of some issues we had no control over, and that would have got some chance to do some, take, take control of it. And raise it back and bring it back to where we began. I, I think that's a prudent step. Question?
I agree.
So I'm, I guess I'm just looking at it, I think the impact is very minimal. I just, you know, and that's the concern is. I'm okay with it.
I think we should proceed now.
I agree. So we're setting up, us up for is two successive meetings.
Yeah, the timeline that I set would be, I, did you get that Glenn?
Yeah.
Okay. That would be, the timeline I set out would be, would be in line with what you guys need to do to get this finalized. So if you.
Tenth and the seventeenth.
Yeah, tenth would be your public hearing.
In passage.
In passage on first reading. And then the seventeenth would be your second reading. And if you want to suspend the rules, have an option. We need to have an adoption that night so we can get the adoption published in time for the remonstrance period.
The state will require that it is submitted prior to August first.
And we're just going to go ahead and submit then the information as we get it. So like tonight, we'll say that, you know, we're going to have, we're going to submit the timeline to them and have a public, tell them we have a public hearing so that they know that this is what we're planning to do. We'll send it to the district, our, our person, our DLGF representative.
You're not voting on the ordinance, but councilor, do we need to have him go to proceed?
Yeah, I think to, just to be clear, I mean, just to make sure the record's clear, I would say a motion to proceed with the necessary time to establish a cap, or a cumulative cap fund.
Would be inappropriate. Whatever you say. Second, no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
At the same time. Thank you.
Good. So we, for establishing the gathering meeting on the tenth and the seventeenth, establish time, you guys say seven? I mean, I'm asking a question.
I need to be seven if, if it's okay with everyone else, my child situation.
You want, well, he needs to be at seven?
Yes.
Okay. Those awesome videos.
If you guys need any, any other financial information or want to see any other impacts, definitely let us know.
Very clear.
Thank you, guys.
During the court of work, we will be going back to the side.
Sure. Quickly, Chief Scott Jastine announced that Dave Rosell had been promoted to captain. And in new business, Lam Martin from Tree City Fall Festival came to the board more fast than for permission to close the same route, the same street, the same route of the parade and for the Tree City Fall Festival. That's approved. Gary Murray talked about the dedication of Hunter Robbins Way, which will take place. The city hall roof was given and awarded to Quality Roofing for forty one thousand five hundred dollars. And mayor and Gary, the city engineer, are going to enter into negotiations with Decatur County. They had the old hotel in the YMCA for leasing parking spaces. Also discussed on a new hire, there was a new fireman that was hired. His name's not been released yet, pending notification of his or her employer. And we also approved the renewal of our ordinance comp insurance and other insurance of city security. Fourth of July parade was approved for street closing, same as last year. Brian Robbins came to counsel. The Danes family is getting a bench in memory of Lieutenant Larry Danes, who passed several months ago, which will be placed in front of the station. And a new fire truck, which I know Jamie's really excited about, is going to be here at the end of November, early December. That's it.
I think I sent that to you, didn't I? I thought that might be another thing, like my. Try and get some production from that.
Now, back to the sign ordinance.
We could sit here until midnight tonight, follow this question, someone else can make a motion.
If I may interject, it's time for you to move the ball along because it's getting dark. You now have established that you're having at least two more meetings this month. So either way you wanted to go, you have the time. You would have the ability to propose either amended or a whole new one in the month of June and pass it July first on third reading. So you would lose about a month of time.
Or on the second meeting, you could absolutely suspend the rules and do the second, third reading and the second meeting.
Yeah, you could have it as, as early as the seventeenth.
Correct.
Either way you went, I mean, if that's, if your inclination is amendment, that's a timeline that you did not have available to you prior to your decision regarding the capital, the income gap.
But I'm already agreeing unless one of you makes a motion, it's veto.
Continue.
Go ahead. I was just trying to.
Whatever you decide to do, if you veto, I, veto, I will not take it personally. It's democracy, it's business.
I guess the only, I mean, I just wanted to make it clear too, though, is from what you said earlier, we could veto that, overturn it, pass the ordinance, and amend it, all three readings tonight if we had a unanimous decision to suspend the rules.
Correct. Or you can do nothing and wait for it and present it at the next meeting.
I mean, I don't, I think we've put a lot of time into the sign ordinance, but not as much as Glenn and Sean, I think they've put a lot of time into it. I don't want to be disrespectful to them either. I mean, they've put a lot of time into this. I think it's what we're talking about, I think, are some minor concessions to what we're looking to do. The entire ordinance, I do not think needs to be done. It's, if we've developed a good ordinance, we're, we're just talking about maybe making some concessions.
You know, Jamie, you've got a good point there, and Sean's very knowledgeable. Spent a lot of time since then. And Gary Murray, wouldn't we listen to him? What'd he say? He's worked for United States too.
I, I'm sorry, Gary, I didn't know what you mean.
I mean, I'm asking you to speak, and Gary has personal opinion on it, heard by and everyone else's. Gary, would you like to speak in regards to this?
I personally would like you to take a little more time to think about it. As this gentleman stated, it does set the aesthetic for your community. There is a balance somewhere. We look at Honda, the biggest employer, biggest building in town, it's probably got to run a small signs round. So they don't have walk-in traffic, but there's a balance somewhere. And I just think you need to think a little bit about that balance and what it might be now that you've gotten a perspective and I measured the stage opening, you can kind of gauge from that and the hospital, you know, just look at the communities you drive around in the next week or two and just make it a point to look at it. And there's a balance somewhere. And just asking you guys for a little bit more time to consider what that balance might be. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Point of information.
So if this is veto, the question, veto, veto, we come back Monday?
Right.
And we can make amendments on Monday? But if you veto, veto, and a sign is sold between now and then, you're stuck with what's sold. If you let it go the way it is now, veto, and present it next Monday, Mr. Robson, and they reverse back to the old, the existing ordinance as it was for another week, or two weeks in this case, we'll have two more meetings, next two weeks, right?
And we could have your meeting.
Yes.
You're having a meeting two more Mondays.
I'm ready to make a motion. And mayor, please don't take this personally, but I want to make the motion to override the veto. I think this is the people's counsel and we all voted five to nothing, passed this ordinance four weeks ago. It's my personal opinion that we need to move forward with this.
So, Darren, you're saying you don't want to do anything with the ordinance, period?
I'm saying we override the veto. I'm not saying that we won't amend it.
The one thing I'm saying I'd like to make clear is if this happens. The one thing I'm saying I'd like to make clear is if this happens, it's wide open and takes the best of the ordinance.
I understand. I'm going to take that risk. For my personal...
Second. Any further discussion?
I, I'd like a comment before we, before we vote on this. I guess I would like to know what everybody's thoughts are on making the concessions to a max, not to exceed two hundred and twenty-five square feet and forty feet. If everybody's in agreement with that, then we won't have a problem passing it. I mean, I guess I'd like to know what everybody thinks about that before we vote to override the veto.
I don't have a problem with it. Glenn? I'm willing to, I'm saying...
Okay.
So if you override it and you're taking a chance, it's something is sold, right?
No, Chris, so we can, if we have a unanimous decision to suspend the rules, we can do all three readings tonight to amend it.
I see.
David wants to...
So you have to override the veto first?
We have to override the veto first and then we can make the amendments. And then we can suspend the rules for the second reading, suspend the... You have to have a unanimous decision.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor to override the veto? Just override it, move over, please.
Mike?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, so I would like to make a motion that we, I'm not sure where the ordinance number is now on that, that we amend the ordinance.
Can you keep the same ordinance if we're moving to amend the...
Two Thousand Thirteen Dash One.
Two Thousand Thirteen Dash One. Probably give me this actually number.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we amend the ordinance Two Thousand Thirteen Dash One to change all the areas where the maximum square footage exceeds two hundred and twenty-five feet to reduce that to two hundred and twenty-five square feet not to exceed. And anywhere that where the height exceeds forty feet to reduce that back to forty.
Give me the appendix one, the chart.
Yes.
Everyone clear on that?